All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daye.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway, present. Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Trachis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of January 7th, 2020?
I move for their approval.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The January 7th, 2020 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number 1, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 2, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 3, 6th District.
Receive and file the communication, please.
So ordered.
Item number 4, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 5, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered.
There are no Roan Bridge matters, so we'll move to other communications. Item number 1.
Receive and file same motion through item number 4, and that will be the order.
Item number 5.
Receive, file, and appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 6.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 7, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the matter be held. Let me see, which one is this? Receive, file, and the new liquor license be approved as requested.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 8.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 9, 5th and 4th Districts.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 10, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 11, please.
So ordered.
Item number 12, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 13, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 14, 5th and 6th Districts.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 15.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal for items number 15 through 19 be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 20.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 21, 5th District.
Receive, file, and the reappointments be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 22.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 23.
Receive, file, and the request for amended contract be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 24.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number 25, and that will be the order.
Item number 26, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 27, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
And that will be the order.
Item number 28, all districts.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Under other communications, item number 1, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number 2, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 3, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 4.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 5.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number 6, and that will be the order. The county executive, Dr. Page, is out of town this evening, but he will have a report at next week's meeting. Report to special committees.
Please hold on the order business.
And that will be the order. That brings us to public forum. This evening, we have 15 speakers. When you are called, please step up to the podium, state your name and your address for the record. Madam Clerk, will you please read the first speaker?
First speaker, Bill Coleman.
Madam Chairman, members of the council. My name is Bill Coleman. I live at 12385 Worthington Drive in South County, 63128. I would like to propose legislation to force developers and home builders from starting new projects until completed projects have cleared up any outstanding legal problems with the completed projects. St. Louis County, MSD, water, gas, and any other entity cannot accept the project until the problems that the project may have caused are taken care of. The developer, the builder, the utility contractor, and any other contributor must have received completion acceptance from the signing-off entity before permits or project approval for another project is awarded. Damage caused to adjoining properties that have legal proceedings pending shall be completed before new projects are approved. The forming of the new LLC companies, which is the way it happens, shall not be accepted from parties of any project with uncompleted legal proceedings. In other words, company ABC can't become BCA if all the people are the same. The purpose of this proposal would force developers to take care of problems that are in litigation before new projects are started. Affected homeowners would have assurance that their problems would be addressed before the developer can move on down the road. Given the workload of the judicial system, these problems can be strung out for years, causing hardships to the innocent homeowner while a developer is still operating on another project. Work stoppage and loss of revenue is the only vehicle that will right this wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Garrett Mees.
Seems kind of looks a little bit pointless since it looks like Steve Stinger's sitting in for Sam tonight. Mrs. Chairman, as I stated last week when Sam Page sat in this chair two years ago, when I first spoke here regarding simple pleasures having been built illegally in my community, he actually took pause to ask who I had spoken to and if any action had been taken. The person I spoke to was Ernie Trachis. What he did was to allow an illegal business to operate without license, stopped the health department and law enforcement from shutting them down, gave a license in violation of county ordinance, and then he rewrote the ordinance to allow the illegal business to operate even still in violation of the new county ordinance. In that order, having spoken to several attorneys and lawmakers from Jeff City, let me explain just how much of a problem that is. Because of the way in which you wrote and passed this legislation by rescinding the ordinance after you already knew they were in violation, after you issued the license, rewriting the ordinance nullifies any new restriction that you think you may have improved upon. Since as a layman, I proved my case so well in front of this council that the drafter of this legislation, Ernie Trachis, tried to rescind the very ordinance, 716225, to cover up the fact and made matters worse. How do you think this is going to play out when the marijuana lobbyists and their attorneys, when they can now build that grow facility right next to that elementary school over in Sunset Hills, Mr. Fitch?
Please direct your comments to the chair, Mr. Mees.
That would be, that would be an ordinance infraction. Some people up here apparently don't know what that is. Now, it could also be built next to your schools, your churches, daycares, and not to mention other illegal businesses will be able to do the same thing unless you shut them down. I had hoped that cooler heads would have prevailed by now, but yet it seems that the blatant arrogance of county government is still very much alive, and another lost multimillion-dollar lawsuit and the incompetence of their predecessors will be what the next administration will be stuck making excuses for unless you correct this mistake and admonish those involved in this unethical behavior. The biggest slap in this face to the people of LeMay and St. Louis County is that Mr. Page signed this very bill in the library of the school district that this illegal business is still in operation to this day. Mr. Trachis, that is anathema.
Mr. Mees, I'm going to need you to direct your comments to the chair, please.
So, Ms. Chairman, I really hope that those head nods that you seem to have a compassion with over there will actually translate into action over here.
Mr. Mees, can you please take all of your materials with you? Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker, Tashonda Troop.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I have so much to say with so little time. For the women sitting on the council, imagine your son with a mental disability being held in the justice center. Imagine not hearing from your son since December. Imagine the next thing you hear is that your son is suffering. Imagine not being able to help your child. Imagine not knowing what to do or who to call. Imagine not being able to ease your own mind because you're worried about your child. Can you imagine hearing terrible things is happening to your child and it seems someone is trying to cover it up? On December 26, a young lady reached out to me via Facebook Messenger with concerns about her best friend, who is currently being held across the street. In her message, she told, she expressed to me her concerns, and she shared with me her allegations. I did the only thing I could think of, and that was reaching out to members of the Justice Services Board. On December 28, I passed these allegations along and was told that they would be passed and the information would be looked into. I was told that this information was shared with the director and the medical staff. A little over two weeks, and all I've heard is that the medical is doing their part in assessing the situation. That was not okay with me, but let me tell you what broke me. Sunday, I was greeting the mothers at my church. Mother Emma stopped me, and she said, "My son is being held in St. Louis County Jail", and started telling me her allegations. I asked her what was her son's name, and she said, "October Smith." I literally fell on the floor because this is the same young man whose best friend contacted me on December 26. The look in his mother's eyes was fear of the unknown, and she didn't, and it didn't sit right with her, wondering what was going on with her child. I can say when Lieutenant Colonel Doyle was across the street and a family member had these type of concerns, he made sure he looked into it. This new director y'all put over there, not so much. In my opinion, he's cold and lacks empathy. He's just a male version of Julia Childs, and from what I heard, he's a bully and he's not transparent. Well, somebody should have told him, "I won't back down and I won't quit." Mother Emma wants to see her son, and she wants to talk to him. If that doesn't happen within 24 hours, she's prepared to go public with her allegations. I don't think this county needs any more bad press, so tell your hollering, screaming director, we need answers and we need them now.
Next speaker, Paul Langdon.
Good evening, Honorable Madam Chair, members of the county council. My name is Paul Langdon. I'm with Covington Realty Partners. Our address is 8301 Maryland Avenue here in Clayton. And I wanted to speak to you briefly tonight about a project that was referred or received by you and filed tonight, 47-19. It's a proposal for some indoor storage down on a piece of land that's wedged between LeMay Ferry and Old LeMay Ferry. It's about six acres, and it's been pretty much the same condition since the 1930s. We have aerials, and remarkably, it hasn't changed in all that time. It's mostly forested, it's been lightly developed on the north end of the site. Unfortunately, in the last few years, the business that was there has declined. Maintenance has gone down with it, and now that vacant, now that business is vacant, and the property is getting worse. The property owner has tried to sell it for a number of years without success. They've had a number of projects that they've looked at, but either through zoning, or through financing, or for a variety of reasons, they can't make it work. There is also some unregulated fill on the site, which has also been discouragement to previous projects. We have been able to put together a site plan that addresses all the issues that we think will improve the public health and safety, not only by cleaning up the site and bringing viable business to it, but by also constructing a new intersection there to get rid of that wedge that's there in time and actually create a 90-degree intersection. It'll bring a significant increase in taxes to the schools. The buildings, I think you'll find, if you take a look at the packet, are probably the best-looking storage buildings that you'll see. They're over half-brick. They have windows, they have color treatments on them, they have low ceilings, low roofs, and all the HVAC equipment is on the ground, so there's no noise transmittal off the site. We believe in this project. We took it to the neighbors, who did not believe in the project when they first heard about it. We talked to the residents of Bristol Ridge and Providence Point. Most of them were very happy with the changes. They expressed some of their concerns again at the planning commission meeting. We addressed them to the commission, and the commission was satisfied with our answers. Not only have we got the neighbors' approval, but also we've talked to and received the approval of the Melville Fire District, Missouri Department of Transportation, who controls LeMay Ferry, St. Louis County DOT, the St. Louis County Department of Planning Staff, and the recommended approval conditions, and most recently, the St. Louis County Planning Commission of all recommended approvals of this project. I hope that in the near future, you'll have the opportunity to review legislation, and if you have any questions of me, I'm always available at the contact information provided. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, David Stokes.
Madam Chair, my purposes are threefold tonight, so I'm going to have to speak very quickly. My first point is to thank the St. Louis County government in general, specifically the members, the six appointed members of the St. Louis County TIF Commission, as appointed by County Executive Page, and commend them for their excellent decision in the recent Maryland Heights TIF proposal vote, where, for the first time in a long time, we have, at least to a large extent, succeeded in stopping, at least for now, the latest terribly destructive floodplain TIF project in St. Louis County. If you're wondering why the flooding is getting so much worse throughout our community, well, one of the reasons is constant floodplain development, and it's tremendous to see the members of the, the six members of the St. Louis County appointees to the TIF Commission, as well as the one member from the Parkway School District to help vote down this TIF application. That was wonderful news for our region, it was wonderful for taxpayers, and it was wonderful for the environment. My other, another purpose here today is, I haven't had a chance to read the bill. I look forward to reading it tonight or tomorrow when it's publicly available, but I'm here to support Councilmember Trachis's bill with his changes to the allowable water height increase in a portion of St. Louis County. I don't know, and feel free to inform me, since I haven't read it, I don't know if it's going to apply to unincorporated county or to a larger part of the county, but however it applies, I think it's a tremendous move, and it will be wonderful for our region. When developers move in now, you know, you're allowed by current law to move up to 12 inches of water up to your neighbors, and that happens frequently, and that, as part of all this floodplain development, is one of the reasons why we have so much, such an increase in flooding in our community. You get a lot of developments all raising the water height 10 inches or 8 inches, well, that's a lot of water. So, again, I look forward to seeing exactly where it applies, but I think it'd be a very smart idea to, to lower that limit from 1 foot to 1 inch, and I think it's an excellent bill by Councilmember Trachis, and I hope it has the support of the full council. And I do intend to, to issue more detailed, like written comments on this issue next week, when I have a chance to study the bill carefully. And my final comment, and I hope I'm not taking too much time, but I think this is appropriate, is, I was on, in regards to the add-on, in regard to the passing of former Councilmember Cunnane, I served as an aide at this council when she served on the council from the 3rd District, and I just, I, before I went to work for Councilman Odenwald, I worked for the entire council and did a lot of work for her, and just had an opportunity to meet her, and she was a dedicated public servant, a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful person, and I'm so happy, so sorry to hear that she's passed, and so happy to see you doing this appropriate resolution in her honor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Next speaker, Todd Swanstrom.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is Todd Swanstrom. I'm a professor at the University of Missouri-St. Louis in Political Science and Public Policy Administration. I've been working in the area of community development and housing for about 35 years, so I feel like I have some experience in this area. And I'm speaking in support of the resolution on the Community Reinvestment Act, which is to be considered by federal regulators, and we should be modernizing this act, not weakening it, and so I want to speak in favor of this, this resolution. This is crucial to St. Louis County. It affects neighborhoods all over the county. I think it's important to recognize very quickly, I only have a little bit of time here, but the Community Reinvestment Act is not the typical federal law of command and control that, that orders banks to do X, Y, or Z. What it does is set up a series of incentives, and the crucial part of the act is that it encourages community groups and civic actors to partner with banks to improve neighborhoods. So what we see here in, in St. Louis, we've seen a real organization. We'll have a speaker from the St. Louis Equal Housing Community Investment Alliance. In response, the banks have formed a metropolitan association of lenders, banks, so we have speeded up the communication between community groups and with the banks, and I'm especially concerned about one aspect of the proposed reforms, which is called the one ratio metric, which would say to a bank, if you have one big deal, that's enough. You're not going to be graded on whether you're working with community groups, or, let's say, one of your staff members serves on the board of a community development corporation, or works with a civic group, that won't matter. And that would be a real tragedy, because in the St. Louis region, we now have a lot of people who work for banks who are involved in community development, who sit on the board of civic groups and help get this work done, bring their expertise to the neighborhoods. And so I just want to make it clear that we should be working to strengthen this act, not to weaken it, and I think the resolution that's proposed, and I believe co-sponsored by Councilwoman Rochelle Walton Gray, would, would do that, and I strongly urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swanstrom.
Next speaker, Jenny Connolly Bowen.
Good evening, all. Thanks for having us here today. My name is Jenny Connolly Bowen. I serve as the Executive Director of the Community Builders Network of Metro-St. Louis, which some of you know is a coalition of over 70 community building organizations. That includes community-based nonprofits like community development corporations, CDCs, but also neighborhood associations, and also lenders and banks and private developers, and philanthropic organizations and government actors, so a whole wide range of orgs across a bunch of different sectors. I'm also here today to speak in support of the resolution that supports a modernizing and not a weakening of the Community Reinvestment Act. Within our network, we get to see firsthand all the time how the Community Reinvestment Act has really been a catalyst for strong relationships among financial institutions and community partners. We've seen important projects and programs take root in neighborhoods that in the past systematically denied investment in financial services, like mortgages, for decades. The CRA was created to build bridges, as many of you know, open doors of opportunity, and combat the very ugly legacy of institutionalized racism, a legacy that still haunts St. Louis. As community members and professionals alike have spoken out about before, the banking industry has obviously evolved a lot over the past 25 years, especially around technology and online banking, and most agree that CRA regulation needs revisions that account for those changes. I think most of us hope that the laws we live by will keep pace with our changing times. I think most of us also hope, though, that when we work through those laws to atone for our society's past and present wrongs, the evolution of how we interpret and enforce them won't pull us away from our original intentions, in this case, to encourage financial institutions to invest in, lend to, and serve communities that have suffered decades of redlining and disinvestment. There's a widespread concern that recently proposed changes to the CRA would weaken incentives for banks to invest in local neighborhoods. And as someone who gets to see every day the amazing things that can happen when financial institutions and community-based organizations, as Dr. Swanstrom was speaking to before, form true partnerships to serve the folks who live here, partnerships that are in many cases sparked and nurtured by the CRA, I sincerely hope that our community and our country will not let that happen. So thanks for your time today.
Next speaker, Celeste Whitzel.
Good evening, Celeste Whitzel, unincorporated St. Louis County. It is our understanding that Councilwoman Lisa Clancy and perhaps Kelly Dunaway are rewriting the anti-vagrancy laws of St. Louis County. While few want to penalize the homelessness, it is important that tools, otherwise known as laws, remain in place to maintain civil order. After all, it took a while to institute anti-stalking laws in the environment of relationship violence and in general harassment issues, and it's crucial to not undermine the whole of society while trying to address specific areas of concern. And also, any anti-vagrancy law revisions need to include the communities of Maplewood and Creve Coeur, where both Councilwomen Clancy and Dunaway reside, and also the other communities of the Ledoux's, Town and Country's, Clayton's, et cetera. Those who live in these protected communities on this council are passing laws that only affect a certain segment of St. Louis County, the unincorporated segment, while these ladies' own privileged communities remain protected from the laws they want to enforce on the rest of us. The words "disingenuous" and "hypocrisy" come to mind. Ladies, please work first to pass these type of laws where you live, and then let us talk about unincorporated St. Louis County. That way, we're all equal under the laws of this county. Your enjoyment of special privileges and law carve-outs are getting old. Regarding a bill to amend Section 16, 616, 230, to allow youngsters ages 14 and 18 with government assistance to receive free pool passes to the Normandy Community Center and the South County Rec Complex, why just these two facilities and not all county locations that have pools? Do you have an idea of how many additional people this amendment will generate, and who will be watching to ensure that no harm comes to any inexperienced swimmers? Will the parents be watching, lifeguards? Is there current adequate staff and supervision? If not, how much additional tax dollars will this free pool service cost taxpayers? It's been almost 27 years since the deadly drowning at Cliff Cave County Park of six people, including four children, from the St. Joseph's Home for Boys, when severe thunderstorms rolled in, triggering flash flooding in the caves, and the children didn't know how to swim. The enthusiasm of children towards water and pools is not child's play, and it needs to be considered seriously to avoid any tragedies and liabilities for both the kids, parents, and the counties on their watch. I also want to take a moment to thank 6th District County Councilman Ernie Trachis for both serving as presiding officer the past six months and for his outstanding work these past three years as councilman. There's been a lot packed into these three years, and Ernie has been a strong voice for unincorporated St. Louis County, South County namely, all this time, and he has watched out for his constituents and his community. St. Louis County has been positive-
I need you to wrap up, your time is up.
I'll wrap up. We hesitate to wonder where we would be- We hesitate to wonder where we would be had he not taken on the Ethics Committee chairmanship that he had and conducted the business of the county by putting people such as Steve Stenger in his rightful place. And we do appreciate Ernie's work and subsequent investigations, and then the federal takedown of some of these individuals who were not serving our county very well. Thank you, Ernie.
Next speaker, Todd L.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. My name is Todd L. State 2917 North Sarah. I'm here as a member of the St. Louis Equal Housing Community Alliance, being on this speaker. And we were informed by colleagues that the council is adopting a strong CRA resolution out of which we are in total support of. It is this policy that strongly encourages financial institutions and banks and other depositories to invest in low and moderate income communities to give them access to capital and other economic opportunities to impact health disparities and to make sure that they have access to homes. So we strongly support this resolution that the council is adopting. Thank you.
Next speaker is Zora Liggins.
I'm Zora Liggins, 5320 Bermuda. Deny, delay, defend, demise. Legal exhaustion results in one winning by default instead of by defeat. Good evening to the entire county council. On last week, I came before this governing body, and I asked that the county council's office withdraw from the matter of Liggins versus McGee. I supplied proof that McGee was an executive assistant, not investigator, as Ms. McNaught misstated in her unsupported pleadings. Ms. O'Rourke, what is, Ms. O'Rourke, what is your reasoning for wanting a judge to make this decision? This matter should be settled, not litigated. To force taxpayers to pay for the defense of Edward McGee under the circumstances is openly discriminating against me. Ms. O'Rourke stated in a recent article that she was committed to a St. Louis County where nobody was discriminated against. This action appears to be set in place to be a hindrance and a distraction. The executive's office has never provided the contact information regarding the fraudulent workers' compensation documents I received from his office. I recently read, as dishonesty increases, public reactions decreases, and falsehoods is becoming a new norm. I came before this body in May of 2018 on behalf of myself and all of those other, all of those other similarly situated, seeking only my due process and equal protection rights in the prosecuting attorney's office. My question was, are we entitled to due process in the prosecuting attorney's office? That question has never been answered. The county council's office has been willing, has been unwilling to talk and compromise with me, and the office appears to be motivated by anger. I have been victimized and mentally paralyzed by this ongoing injustice long enough. Do you, as our elected officials, understand that being fur on is an ethical or basic human needs and due process and equal protection or fundamental rights that ensure our democracy works? I am requesting again that the county council's office withdraw from the matter of Liggins versus McGee and allow Edward McGee to either represent himself or retain counsel at his own expense. If there is authority that will allow this, I am asking that the county council provide this authority. And St. Louis County residents are forced to pay taxes to support county employees who are infringing upon our rights.
Next speaker, Glenn Burley.
So my name is Glenn Burley. I work for the St. Louis Equal Housing and Community Reinvestment Alliance. I'm also here to speak in favor of the resolution in support of a strong Community Reinvestment Act. I have some copies of the executive summary of our most recent look at the CRA's impact on St. Louis region. This is done by surveying lenders in the area and gives you actual numbers about impacts here, if I can leave that.
Thank you.
And I also want to speak specifically to the impacts in St. Louis County. So CRA advocacy and through the coalition that I provide staff support for, our work is done, has ensured that communities that have not had access to lending for small businesses and mortgages and other things have gained that. When the Midwest Bank Center opened in Page Dale, that was the first bank to ever open in Page Dale. The central bank that is in Ferguson, numerous banks throughout St. Louis County have opened because of the advocacy of the coalition that I work for over the years, working to ensure that lenders are working throughout our entire community. I also want to point out what the projected potential losses from this if the reforms put forward by a comptroller of the currency thing go through. NCRC, the National Reinvestment Coalition, National Community Reinvestment Coalition, has estimated that St. Louis region between the city and the county could lose up to $323 million in lending a year. And a lot of that comes from the fact that, under this new proposal, lenders could fail their tests in half of their markets and still receive a passing grade. And as we deal with banks that continue to concentrate and merge and function over market after market after market, and St. Louis being a slow-to-no-growth community, I'm not just talking the city and the county, I'm talking our region, is not growing in population as fast as many others in the country. And if lenders have the option that are functioning in numerous markets and not doing business in communities like our own that are not growing rapidly like some others, then that means business is going to leave here, you know? So thank you to everybody on the council for considering this resolution. We certainly hope you vote in favor of it. I left some information with the lady over there. So thanks, everybody.
Next speaker, Tom Sullivan.
Madam Chair, I have a few things to mention. First, I would question if it was wise of the council to name you as chair. You do not seem to understand which issues in St. Louis County that are important to citizens. And when you voted to give $240 million for the convention center expansion while taking many contributions from those supporting it, you looked like you were trying to imitate Steve Stenger. At the December 17th council meeting, Councilman Harder gave a list of a number of things the council did in 2019. I have a partial list of some of the things the council didn't do. Last year was the 25th anniversary of the County Council Stormwater Committee. It was created by then-council chair Debbie Kersting due to many citizen complaints, and it held meetings all over the county. Many residents testified about the stormwater problems. They were then sent letters from MSD saying they couldn't help. MSD continues to do little or nothing about stormwater problems in the area. The MSD Board meeting last week, a resident from South County told of his severe stormwater problems. His backyard was being washed away. He got the usual response, can't help you, nothing has changed in 25 years. By the way, the newest MSD Board member, Amy Fair, who was appointed by County Executive Page, did not show up at the meeting. Despite getting about $1.5 billion in the last decade from St. Louis County, Bystate still has problems getting people to jobs and still has problems with security. Just last week, there was another robbery on a MetroLink train. A MetroLink rider posted these comments on STLtoday.com following the metro story last month. "I ride MetroLink daily, and I'm the one that is clamoring for more real protection, not the phony security platform guards they have. I witnessed fistfights, roving gangs of teenagers holding up trains by blocking the doors, gambling, drug dealing, open bottles of liquor, food, smoking on trains, you name it. No matter how many millions are given for security, nothing seems to change." Also, there's still nothing going on with Jamestown Mall. There's a story in the St. Louis American on December 24, 2009, that told the North County residents being concerned about the mall, which was still open at the time, and about the retail that was leaving the area. 10 years later, and not much has changed there either. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next speaker, Angie Zoric. Next speaker, Michael Burton.
Michael Burton here.
Good evening.
Good to see y'all. I first want to thank Chairwoman Clancy for coming back down to Afton again and spending some time with me and some residents in the space right in between Tower T and Resurrection Cemetery at the beginning of January, and kind of hearing us out and seeing all the beautiful deer and wildlife that's there. And I also want to thank Councilman Trakis for looking over this body for, I guess, the six months that you did, and also for coming to our town hall again in Afton. We greatly appreciate it. And I also have to thank Mike Shamia and Steve Wachenbach for making my dreams come true. So why am I here? We all know Tower T is saved and coming back, so what gives, right? Well, during our fight to save Tower T, we always knew there was a potential development in the works right above it. But like I said before, we didn't know how many acres, how many houses, and most importantly, where they wanted to build those houses. We now know. It comes all the way down to the back of Tower T, meaning almost all of the trees and wildlife directly above Tower T would be gone. This is unacceptable. I heard a St. Louis County employee say, "I thought the residents of Afton wanted houses at resurrection." None of you all, but somebody. This is not true. Some do, most don't. Most want to see a compromise. I have personally said I would love to see new houses in Afton at resurrection if it was done in a responsible way. From what I have seen so far, from the development that they want to create, would not be done in a responsible way, unfortunately. A few months ago, I got my hands on a map of the potential development. Now, it was from a regular citizen. It was a crinkled-up piece of paper. I don't know if this was the original plan. I don't know if this was the second version or the potential version. I have no idea. But if their current plans look anything like what I saw, it's completely unacceptable. Almost all of the trees at Resurrection Cemetery would be gone, some of which are 250 years old, and that's coming from the Archdiocese. Like I mentioned the last time I was here, I have been in contact with Mr. Jim Brennan of McKelvey Homes, Randy Rathert of the Archdiocese, and both have said they're willing to talk about a compromise. A compromise where-
Your time is running up. I need you to get around-
Okay. A compromise where McKelvey can build houses and the community of Afton would still be able to keep some green space and some wildlife. I'll stop there. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Final speaker, Hannah Mongomori.
I've been coming here to plead for some legislation to protect our cast ladies. Today, I also plead for the protection of the less powerful white ladies of our church. On August 12, 2018, Brentwood City Recreation Director came to our church and spoke about church landlives to build a public park on our church property. Ever since, the longstanding members who oppose the church landlives have been scattered to other churches, and CCLS has been banned from our longstanding partnership. I was banned and arrested. Our church preschool assistant director was fired. I am black, but all the rest who were scattered and fired are white. Under the Brentwood City's Black Lady Administrator, our church's elderly white members and white widows are being opposed, fired, and scattered. I have hope that this Women Majority Council will protect church ladies. Like in 1960s, under a white governor of Alabama, black church kids were bombed out, but civil rights of U.S. law protected the rest of the blacks. I have hope, because in 2019, the Men Majority Council here, they were courageous and they defeated the Mr. Steve Stenger's corruption. And in U.S., the U.S. laws give equal rights to women also to be as courageous as the Men Majority Council. So I, I have, I do have great hopes for this council. We had a woman prime minister long back in India, even before I was born. But in India, we do not have like same equal rights like for men and women. So she was so intimidated by her second son, and he basically ruled the country and made a wreck. But I have so much hopes, and in this new year, I come to bless this Women Majority Council also to be as courageous as the Men Majority Council was last year. And please look into this church. It's an old church, 80-year-old congregation, and some of the white members, they've said with tears to me, Hannah, I've been coming here since I was a little girl. She teaches at Washington University where I studied, so I just didn't want to let it go. And I plead the council and bless you to help these white women and white widows. Thank you.
That concludes the public forum. Please proceed with the introduction of bills. Bill Number 7, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $168,711.61 from the Missouri Secretary of State, appropriating the same for support of election improvements, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 8, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $236,898.60 from the St. Louis County Children's Service Fund, appropriating the same for the Nurse-Family Partnership Program, and authorizing the Director of Public Health to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 9, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $375,993.93 from the St. Louis County Children's Service Fund, appropriating the same for support of the Kathy J. Weinman Shelter, and authorizing the Director of Human Services to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 10, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and ordinance, authorizing the county councillor to execute a contract with Gilmore &amp; Bell, a professional corporation for bond council services for county's 2020 bond refunding project. Bill Number 11, introduced by Councilmember Trakis and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Oates Associates, Inc., for professional engineering services related to the Heinz Road Bridge Replacement Project, CR-1282, and authorizing the Director of Transportation to execute necessary revisions to the schedule of work activities. Bill Number 12, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with HealthSpring Life and Health Insurance Company, Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company, and Cigna Healthcare of Colorado, Inc., for the- Health and Life Insurance Company, and Cigna Healthcare of Colorado, Inc. for the Department of Public Health to receive reimbursement for services provided to patients at county health centers. Bill number 13, introduced by Councilmember Clancy in ordinance, amending Chapter 616, Title VI, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, 1974 as amended, county parks, parkways, and recreational areas by repealing and reenacting Section 616.230 pertaining to various user fees and assessments related to use of county park facilities and services. Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmember Tracus in ordinance, amending Chapter 1008, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, 1974 as amended, floodplain management regulations by repealing and reenacting Sections 1008.020 and 1008.050 pertaining to regulatory floodways. Madam Chair, those are all of the bills.
Madam Chair, may I add one thing? Bill number 14, I'd like to be added as a cosponsor.
No objection. And me as well. No objection.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Is this pertaining to the water levels?
Yes.
I'd like to be added to a cosponsor as well.
No objection.
All right. With that...
Be a full council sponsor?
I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Do we want that as a full council sponsor?
If everyone is agreeable, that'd be fine.
With that, we will move on to perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
Please hold. Bill number 385. Bill number 385 is held.
Bill number one, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for the perfection of bill number one, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one is perfected.
Bill number two, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two is perfected.
Bill number three, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three is perfected.
Bill number four, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number four is perfected.
Bill number five, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch, Tracus, and Harder.
Please hold and refer to the committee of the whole, and I believe the council chair on it is the 28th, February 28th.
I think I got mixed up on another hearing, but it will be coming up very soon.
Okay, so we'll get the date later.
We will get the date later. Bill number five is held.
Bill number six, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number six, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number six is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold bill number 320. A committee of the whole meeting has been scheduled to discuss this bill, and it will be next in two weeks, January 28 at 3:00 PM. So with that, bill number 320 is held.
Bill number 387, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 387.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
I'm sorry. Oh, aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 387, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 387 is finally passed.
Bill number 388, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Madam Chair, I'm asking to hold bill number 388. Given what's transpired on MetroLink in the last week alone, it's clear that the chronic problem with safety and security on Metro persists. I'd like to request the committee of the whole to have Mr. Roach and his security team come in and respond to this body's questions regarding exactly what they're doing. We keep hearing and they keep quoting in media that they're making progress, and yet last week, someone was held up at gunpoint on the train at the Central West End Station. And now we have employees that are being compelled to come forward and tell the truth about how abysmal security is on Metro. I think before we give them another $4.9 million for security, it's incumbent on this body to hold a committee of the whole and inquire of Bi-State exactly what the status really is.
Bill number 388 will be held. This is an urgent issue, so I'll be working with the clerk to schedule a committee of the whole as soon as possible.
Very well. Thank you.
Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have 13 resolutions this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Walton Gray.
This is the resolution pertaining to the Community Reinvestment Act. The Community Reinvestment Act was a landmark civil rights bill that was passed in 1977. And I know Councilwoman Gray and I are both concerned by the federal government's attempts to weaken this law, which will undermine our efforts here in St. Louis County to make our community more inclusive and equitable. So therefore, we have offered this resolution to push back on these problematic changes and let the feds know that a weakened Community Reinvestment Act will not be tolerated. So with that, I move to adopt resolution number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are four ayes and three noes.
Resolution one is adopted.
Resolution number two through 12, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Tracus.
I move for adoption of resolutions number two through 12.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolutions two through 12 are adopted.
Madam Chair, we need to...
Roll call?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolutions two through 12, we have seven ayes.
Resolutions two through 12 are adopted.
Resolution number three, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Dunaway, Fitch, and Tracus.
Please read resolution number 13.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution number 13, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Dunaway, Fitch, and Tracus. Whereas, Edith Cunane was first elected to the county council in 1997 to represent the third council district and faithfully serve the people of St. Louis County, especially the children. And whereas, before serving as a council member, Mrs. Cunane worked as a drug and alcohol councillor and then went on to found the St. Patrick's Center, a nationally recognized and successful organization that serves the homeless population and those at risk of becoming homeless. She was the executive director of the St. Patrick's Center for 10 years and created many programs, all while maintaining a substantial volunteer program. And whereas, Mrs. Cunane also served on the board of the St. Louis County Library District and was recognized by other organizations throughout St. Louis, the nation, and the world for her dedication to others, including the United Way of St. Louis, the Archdiocese of St. Louis, and the United Nations. And whereas, Edith Cunane passed away on January 3, 2020, survived by her husband, two children, and six grandchildren. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council salutes the life and accomplishments of the late Edith Cunane, expresses its sorrow at her loss, and extends its sympathy to her family and friends. Section two, the acting administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to the family of Edith Cunane as a permanent testament of the county council's sense of loss and further expresses its hope that her life and memory will be an inspiration for all.
I move for adoption of resolution number 13.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Excuse me. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number 13, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number 13 is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business.
Item number one.
Receive file and the appointment be approved as recommended. Is there a...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two.
Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Receive file and the appointment be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to new business, we have four prepared orders this evening, orders number two through five.
I move for the adoption of order number two, three, and four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Orders two, three, and four are adopted.
Then I move for the adoption of order number five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Order five is adopted. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.